All right, everybody, we are getting started, so if you can have your attention, please. Welcome to the October fifteenth, 2024, 6:30 PM City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I will call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules of speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-dedicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions and requests, must address the pending issues, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign-up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you so much. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the regular City Council meetings of August thirteenth, 2024, 5:30 PM Presentations Meeting of September twenty-fourth, and Special City Council Meeting on September twelfth, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Got the motion in a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Minutes are accepted. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. We have some administrative housekeeping to do. We're going to be rescheduling four items that need to be re-advertized. So I'll just go through those, each one, and we'll need a vote for each one of these. Item nine B, which is ordinance number forty-one, 2024, Building Trades Service Cleanup. It's been re-advertized for the first reading to be on twenty-two October twenty-four, and the final public hearing on twelve November 2024.
Check.
Move to move those ordinance number forty-one, 2024, to first reading on October twenty-second, and the final reading on November twelfth.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Moves.
Item nine C, which is ordinance number forty-two, 2024, Outdoor Storage Cleanup Advertised has been re-advertized. The first reading is on twenty-two October 2024, and the final public hearing is on twelve November 2024.
Member Nelson.
Move to continue ordinance number forty-two, 2024, to first public hearing on October twenty-second, 2024, and final public hearing to November twelfth, 2024.
Second.
Got the motion and the second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Moves. City Manager.
Item nine D, which is Small Scale Amendment Number One dash twenty-two, four, State Road four oh five and Singleton Avenue, PD North. It's being, the first reading is scheduled now for September twenty-fourth, which it's already occurred, and the public hearing is October twenty-second, 2024.
Move to continue item nine D, SSA Number One, twenty-two, four, to a public hearing on October twenty-second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Moves.
Right, and that includes ordinances number thirty-seven, twenty-two, four, and thirty-eight, twenty-two, four. Lane Sinzoni.
Item nine E, which is Small Scale Amendment Number Two dash twenty-two, four, State Road four oh five and Singleton Avenue, PD South, and the first reading was held on twenty-four September 2024, and the public hearing will be twenty-two October 2024.
And again, that's ordinances thirty-nine, twenty-two, four, and forty, twenty-two, four.
Move to continue that ordinance to public hearing October twenty-second, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Moved.
Onto Boards and Commission. The first item is Item Six A, which is the North Brevard Commission on Park and Recs. Their semi-annual report is in your packet. No actions requested. Item six B, the Titusville Housing Authority, the Titusville Housing Authority Semi-Annual Report is written in your packet, and no action is required.
All right, City Manager.
Mayor, can I?
Go ahead.
Add in there. I don't know if there are people in here that were here for nine D and nine E, but could we let them go if they want to?
Nine what now?
Nine D and nine.
Oh, well, yeah, we could. Let me just go explain. I was going to have them do that because it didn't get explained very well. We don't normally do all this meeting-moving-around stuff, but our meeting, due to the hurricane, was canceled. This meeting is last week's meeting, and things have to be advertised a certain amount of time, and these were not. So we cannot hear them until they are. So that's why I'm sitting here as we're doing this, thinking, I don't know if we explained there's a reason for this. The hurricane threw us off course, so we got to back all these up because they weren't advertised long enough. Now, that being said, if any of those were yours, feel free. You don't have to stay. I'm sure you know that, but we throw that out there. All right, back to City Manager, I believe.
We are on petitions and requests.
Okay, okay, now we're on petitions and requests, which is a little quicker than normal, too. So. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
See you next week. Yeah, next week. Oh, no, it's next week. Next week. Next week. Stan, is this where you're leaving? No?
Yeah.
All right, petitions and requests in the public. Come on. Yes, absolutely. You know what to do.
I'm Yvette Fliss at Forty-eight Sixty Santa Rosa. Haven't you?
Guys on the right side, let her speak, please. Thank you.
I'm speaking at the property at four-one-four Rock Pit Road in eighteen oh one Tropic Street, Titusville, which is a low-lying piece of heaven that includes a hundred-and-eighty-year-old historic home, the location of Titusville's first schoolhouse, the location of a very early barrel quarry, and approximately four acres of garden studios, tiny house art studios on wheels, four of them to date, where artists can have retreats, each uniquely and individually decorated by the creative and elegant Maxine Trainer. I'm also mentioning the owner, the celebrated Maxine Trainer. She's a treasure and the most well-known artist in the area because she is world-renowned. She's also the recipient of the key to the city of Titusville from ex-mayor Jim Tully. She's also a recipient of the Everyday Hero Award from Channel Thirteen Spectrum News for community service, both for teaching underserved children in the community. Ms. Trainer created and opened Stonefire Studios and served the community of their teaching area children. She showed the town how to spell art, and Stonefire's existence was instrumental in the city gaining community development grants, which were then used to bump up the art scene downtown. She is actively recovering from stage-four breast cancer and was just beginning to step up her community programs again when the floodings began weeks prior to Hurricane Helene and Milton. This is a low-lying area with one side of budding Tropic Street at its lowest point, at the bottom of two hills. Environmental water and now stormwater collected the old quarry pond, which is traditionally fifty by a hundred feet, so rain events overflow the original boundaries. This is made worse by storm drain locations in the area, each uphill from the property on all sides. Water seeps the lowest level, so the storm drains really don't do anything to drain the water. Fourteen years ago, a temporary solution was found. The city pumped out the property, and under ex-mayor Jim Tully's jurisdiction, tiny asphalt berms were added to the side of the tarmac surface, which was removed at the lowest point of the road three days later by a crew. This allowed rainwater and stormwater to run off into Ms. Trainer's property again, effectively making her four-acre garden and all the studios into a stormwater drainage field for the city. Major flooding has occurred four times since that. Previous to Hurricanes Helene and Milton, she experienced record flooding. Her schoolhouse studio and workplace was underwater, and the storage area for maintenance supplies was flooded to the parking lot at the corner of Tropic and Rock Pit. The result was that the property was unable to handle the extra water from the storms and was mostly underwater. And please see the photos. Did you give those handouts out? Please see the photos. That, oh, looks like Mayor's got one.
I think you got four pages.
Flooding is as deep, yes, as five feet in some areas. The studios at the higher levels, level elevations flooded. Major works of arts of her were destroyed. Three out of the four tiny house arts.
Hold on, hold on. How much do you need to finish your?
I have maybe a minute.
Okay, take a minute. Add a minute, please.
Thank you. Three out of the four tiny heart studios on wheels are flooded, and one of them is extremely damaged. Stately oaks unindated by stormwater runoff previous to the storm have come down. We are in deep appreciation of Sandra Rella, the city of Titusville's Public Works Operations Director, for a swift and concerned response. Crew arrived this morning to pump out the official storm drain retention pond. They're also building a temporary berm along the lowest point of Tropic Street. But we need a storm drain at the lowest point on Tropic Street. A storm drain manhole exists right now at the intersection of Tropic Street and Rock Pit Road, so the insertion of a storm drain could easily join with the already-existing stormwater system located a few yards away. And that would be how the city of Titusville honors a bearer of the key to the city and all of its residents.
Well, first of all, thank you for presenting that and how you presented that in a way I understand everything you're saying. I think we've seen this House for other reasons, art reasons, and, I mean, this is.
Yes.
This is beautiful. I mean, I just mesmerized.
The top picture is beautiful.
Just mesmerized. Now, that being said, I'm not as familiar with the flooding there. We certainly have issues in various areas, and this apparently is one. And I appreciate you complimenting the efforts that have been made. Kevin, can you give me some kind of history or some idea, either one of you two, because I am not, I'm not as familiar with this by any means, and you mentioned Mayor Tully, that goes back away.
Yeah, for what I recall, we did pump out the property once in the past. Looking through some of our old notes, I think it was around. Sorry, I had it in front of me a few minutes ago, but it's been a good, I'm sorry, do have it in front of me. It looks like we did it back over a decade ago. We did pump it out once before. We did put an asphalt curb along Tropic Street from the street directly to the west to here where the runoff does come down neighboring streets. So what we did today was restore that curb, set up a pump to one of our storm manholes, close down the intersection to allow our pumps to run with the hose across the street for the time being. And then our plan moving forward would be to look at installing a storm drain, which will drain Tropic Street. So I want to make sure to make that clear. When Tropic Street is about four feet higher than our property, we'll be containing the water that comes off of Tropic. We cannot assist the other private properties to drain to a low point, but this will assist Tropic Street from draining off of its shoulders, like the curb is today. But a storm drain will expedite that. But again, the last time I looked at elevations, we were elevation twenty. The low property is about sixteen, so we probably will not be able to place a storm drain low enough to be able to drain at sixteen feet. It's going to be enough to drain off the Tropic Street runoffs.
But that's where most of the flooding comes from, is the runoff.
That would be, it sounds like, it would be of an assistance to do that. And I realize your issue there, too, is you can't say, okay, we're going to go fix a private property with city taxpayer money. But if you fix Tropic Street, this may be some sort of a remedy that we can hope for. So, and I appreciate that, Kevin, if you have anything else to add, or if you guys can communicate. It sounds like you've already communicated. Yes, well, I appreciate that. Thank you for sharing that, and I always love seeing these pictures. I don't like seeing the flooding, but what beauty. Maybe it's just me. I just think it's awesome.
She's a treasure.
Wow, wow, for sure. Thank you for the way you presented that.
Mayor, can I ask a follow-up question?
Member Stokoe.
Yep, just with Kevin, I feel like we have had this happen before since I've been on council. Can you explain, is this property in the wetlands, or how is this property? This has happened before because I remember this, or is it in a flood?
I don't believe it's a wetland property. I believe it is a low-lying property, but not a wetland property.
So it is in the flood zone?
Well, no, I don't believe it's in the registered floodstone, floodstone, flood zone either.
Okay.
Maybe Maxine, maybe you know, but I don't believe it's in the flood zone.
It's not in the flood. Okay, that's what I was wondering, too. Okay.
Yeah, so I don't think it's in any type of measured flood zone, or, you know, I think it is just it's lower than some of the surrounding properties. And I think the effort we can make to mitigate the public property impacts of a private property.
Let's see if we can't get some dry area over there.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Next up, petitions and requests.
Hi, Kate Perez, thirty twenty-five South Washington Avenue. I'm also here for my friend Maxine. I'm wondering, since this was a well-known problem, right? Why hasn't it been addressed in a more final manner? I feel like not, I get that the road is FDOT, the other road is private. I'm thinking that maybe like the more than one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars that you guys have spent suing me, my husband, a small group of people in a nonprofit, that could have probably gone a long way to mitigating this problem, right? That's the lawsuit that the first judge said, you have no case. The second judge said, you have no case. He even issued summary judgment, but you voted, Miss Member Stokoe, to appeal again and waste more of our tax dollars on that, correct? And you're running for election again. Interesting. So I'm wondering if you guys could start spending our tax money more responsibly. In this case, something could have been done before this catastrophic flooding, and it wasn't. Yvette and I moved a bunch of very wet paintings, okay? But the structures themselves were flooded, right? And this is her livelihood, right? Not to mention the children that she teaches who are disadvantaged. Where are they supposed to go? Should they have been rowboats for the art lessons? It's almost like we can't have anything good here because it's always about how things look and not how the infrastructure is. I was there the day that sign on the street between Arby's and Searstown was mowed down by a ramage truck. I happened to see that scraped completely off, all right? City put it back up, but it was blank. It didn't say anything. Then they took it down completely, and I'm guessing because of that, all those many variances that you guys have given to the developer from California for extra height, extra density, less setbacks, but the roads are inadequate. And I don't know if we're now pretending that road is adequate. Maybe. And in addition, it's going to flood, I mean, it's going to put a ton of traffic on our tiny, tiny little roads, Hopkins, US One, all of those. Last thing I want to say is people are losing their flood insurance. People are losing their homes here, okay? We want you to work for us now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up.
Hi there.
Hi.
Hi, my name's Lisa Nicholson. I live at six-six-four zero Dock Avenue, Port St. John. I'm here as Maxine's friend, and we've been friends for, I don't even know, we lost count, but over fifteen years. First, I wanted, and so I've been a part of this garden for over fifteen years as her friend, as a volunteer. My heart is there, but I want to say thank you because when I pulled up to her property tonight, I went down to the end of the street, and there were your signs, and you were pumping water. And I stopped. You guys were there pumping water. And to hear you guys say what you said, thank you, and to acknowledge that you've seen her house before and the good that comes out of that place. I walked into her garden when my daughter, I think was five, I got one of her cards at Sculptor for my daughter to do a camp. And I roamed into the garden. I had my daughter. She stayed for the camp, and we've been friends since. And I've been volunteering as her friend. I think I did some Saturday morning classes, just sat there and told people, come on in, and took their money, maybe put it in the jar, but I showed up, and I kept showing up. And I've watched Maxine build this beautiful garden that gives so many different things to so many different people. And this past summer, she built what she'd been dreaming of. I mean, she was doing her stained glass classes. She, artists were coming from all over. We were doing, we were working with the community. There were some grief things going on. There were, it was really powerful. It was a wonderful place to be. And today I was thinking about lying in the grass up there over the summer, doing this bowls classes, meditation, and listening to some people in the stained glass studio, and some people were up in the treehouse. And I think Max was on her porch, and I was thinking, this is what she's really worked so hard for. And we've all been a part of it. I mean, I learned to hammer nails and screw guns, and I helped her build this beautiful place. My daughter is still a part of this. If she needed a place to go and just be, she could just go be there. She's an artist as well. My daughter is an artist. And I've encouraged her to be who she is, and Max has been an influence in my daughter's life. So I'm here as her friend. I've seen this happen over and over. We've built this together as a community and her friends. This time, I heard her voice, and it was different. She didn't sound good. And I went over, and I saw it, and I've never seen anything like this ever. So it'd be great to move forward and to give, you know, to start giving back to this community. I mean, she, there's so much going on in there for this community, and she's an amazing woman, amazing friend. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, and thank you for your words. Appreciate that. Next up.
Hi. My name is Scott Levin. I'm a resident of Coco at fifty-five Riverside Drive. But I met Max about, Maxine, about eight years ago. And actually, it was the day I was walking around with my dog, looking for a place to live, and Max was the one who suggested I ask somebody next door to where she was standing, and I did. And she led me to the forens sign, and that's how I got my first apartment in Coco. So from then on, we became friends, and around that same time, soon after, she invited me to her property. And the day I arrived there, I saw this class going on of all these happy kids learning how to create art. And they were not only creating art, but they were engaged with each other, and it was just a really, really good welcoming scene. Yvette really said it all, as did Lisa. It's hard for me to really say more, and I know I don't have to convince you of Maxine's character and what she's contributed. So I'm not going to try. And this is actually my first time at a town meeting, so it's really wonderful to hear these things going on. And I also want to say thank you. I was out there this morning, and I saw the crews pumping the water, and it was a beautiful sight. But I'm just hoping that, I also want to say, one other thing is that soon after I met Max, it was also one of those years where there was a lot of flooding on the property, and there was folks going around in boats rather than walking around on the property. But I'm just hoping that maybe there's something that, as much as I've heard that there's only so much that can be done, maybe some new fresh faces as far as just an engineer can be brought in, maybe take a look at it in a fresh light, and maybe someone who, without a doubt, you all have a lot of experience, and this is Florida, so we're, we all have to deal with natural disasters. And right now, there are a lot of people hurting, but maybe there's just something that no one has ever seen. And it can just be, you know, just some effort can be put into, even just a little money to just get someone in, just to say, okay, we're at a loss as to what to do right now. I know you're doing a lot, and you're going to do a lot, but maybe for the complete picture, I can just stop it once and for all. Those are my hopes. Again, you can only do what you can do. And I certainly appreciate all the efforts you're making, and I just hope it continues.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the words. I appreciate what Maxine has done clearly, and I appreciate the people who've come to represent her. That means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, well, next up.
Hi, my name is Jill Dobson. I live here in Titusville. And I just, I realized that we moved some items off the agenda tonight, but I just wanted to come here tonight. The Small Scale Amendment One dash twenty-two, four, and Two dash twenty-two, four, is a project that's really going to impact a number of neighborhoods in our central part of Titusville at the intersection of four oh five and Singleton. And I just wanted to let you know how important that is to the people in the communities that surround that area, not only in regards to the city roads and the other infrastructure that it will involve, but also the environmental impacts relating to the surrounding wetlands and all of the other runoff that we've heard about and the flooding impacts that are potentials. So we know that we'll be here with you next week to discuss more in detail, but I just wanted to make sure that you understood that we're here to represent that we, it is really important to us, and we'll look forward to it next week to have the discussion.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Next up. You better get in front of Stan.
So I'm here to support Maxine also.
Real quick, everybody know who you are. I know we all know who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Laurie Thompson, and I live in Memes, thirty-five fifty Irwin Avenue.
That's what I thought. Okay, go ahead.
And I want to thank Sandra, first of all, because I told Maxine to go try to find Sandra, so apparently that happened. And, you know, this situation, I don't understand why the city put an asphalt berm right there where the water's flowing onto Maxine's property and then came back several days later and removed it. They must have had, they must have had a gigantic lake on Tropic Street, you know, at the bottom of those two hills, and that must be why they removed the berm shortly after they put it up. And I know that Maxine has asked for help before, but this is a situation that it's kind of ridiculous that for years now, Tropic Street has been draining into her property instead of having the water go into a proper storm drain. property instead of having the water go into a proper storm drain somewhere. So I appreciate the fact that, that you guys reacted so quickly. I feel bad that, that the damage occurred, that hopefully we can do something. I don't know, maybe, maybe we can raise, maybe we can bring in some truckloads of sand or something like that and try to elevate the area around. That, you know, it's a borrow pit. It was there, that's why Rock Pit Road is called Rock Pit Road. There was a pit there where they dug the Coquina Rock out, you know, to do construction and stuff. But it's never flooded like that before. So I appreciate anything that you can do to, to help out. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to comment on the Singleton Avenue projects. So we're looking at having wetland impacts. So you, you've seen what, what's happening all, all over central Florida now with the flooding, you know, unbelievable flooding from, from this last hurricane and from Irma and from Ian. And, and so when you start messing around with wetlands and you've, and you start filling in wetlands here, well, the water that you're displacing, when you impact those wetlands, it has to go somewhere else. And so that's what's happened. They've developed in places where they really shouldn't have. And now we're suffering the consequences. And so you, you just, you just okayed spending or getting a grant to do a study on those wetlands and, you know, to see, I think it's a feasibility study. It, it seems like you're putting the cart before the horse if you're going to allow more development to impact those wetlands before that study is even completed. You know, slow down, put on the brakes a little bit, and let's figure out what, what you might be doing by adding more developments along the edges of those big wetlands. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up. Okay. Your normal cleanup.
Stan Johnston, PE. And I'm, I'm here to ask what I've sent you, an email dated October the 2nd. And that is to, to stop the spraying of women, children, and babies by leaving the fountains turned on in ponds that are polluted, known to be polluted by sewage. And there's no doubt that it, we have an admission already from Jolynn Nelson in writing and also verbally that, that she, and I expect other people in the council is, is that have left the fountains turned on because some anonymous person, FDOP, FDEP, said it's okay. Well, it's not okay. And there's, I know of no engineer, professional engineer, that will okay it. It's unhealthy and it's harmful. And it's, and just a few minutes ago in CRA meeting, Mr. Diesel said it's not deliberate spraying, it's not deliberate. Well, I guess what you're saying, it's accidental?
It's none.
We know it's going to, when the wind blows, it's going to blow sewage on people. And I mentioned to you also is that if I spray sewage on my neighbor, the neighbor will call the police on me and I'll be arrested. But when the city sprays people, sprays people with the sewage from these, these fountains, they continue doing it. And so on today, I sent a letter about 3:00 AM this morning to the governor to ask him to come in because he can't, I can't stop you guys. I can't stop the police department from letting it happen, state attorney, FDEP, council, CRA, city manager. So you're doing it deliberately. I call it deliberately and you disagree with me. So I'm asking, as per this email sent you October the 2nd, is to go ahead and, and make a motion to terminate city manager for this cause. And this, this email of October, today, is, I've sent it to you and it's, I've sent it, given it to Wanda as a record to be with this meeting. So it's the letter to governor. So I'm asking you to go ahead and do that. Go ahead and put the motion toward terminating the city manager for cause.
You good?
Go ahead. Go ahead. Okay. So what I see is that you're going to be, have the legacy of the only city in the world that sprays women, children, and babies with sewage. Only city in the world. Thank you.
All right, next up. Anybody else? Come on up again. Hi.
Thank you again for your time. First, I'd like to thank the street workers.
Don't forget your name.
Ray, R-A-Y.
Thank you, Ray.
First, I'd like to thank the street workers for their prompt pickup of limbs, branches, and related hurricane debris in my neighborhood. I feel they deserve recognition for good work. And second, can anything be done to get Florida Today, the newspaper, to stop throwing circulars throughout Gardendale? They throw them in the street. They throw them on people's lawns. Maybe they hit the driveway. But believe it or not, many people are too lazy to pick them up and throw them away. They are an eyesore and often sit until pulverized by cars because the people are too lazy to pick them up and they get wet. And eventually, they're going to end up in the storm drains along with the plastic wrappers. So I've spoken to code enforcement about that, and they say they have the right to distribute them. But I can tell you, do I have to get a petition to go through Gardendale to tell you who really wants that paper? I could think maybe they could take it to the doorstep rather than just sling it anywhere. And this is every week it's been going on for a couple of years. Lastly, I know I only have three minutes. Again, request your help in doing your job to stop the excessively loud pickup truck in Gardendale. I've heard people talk about flooding and sewage. Well, sleep deprivation is a health hazard also. We've had this truck awaken us in the early morning hours since February. My last meeting, Ms. Nelson, was kind enough to suggest I call legal aid. Well, I'm a taxpayer, the renter, the renter, excuse me, who's controlling the noisy truck. He doesn't pay taxes. So now I not only get to pay taxes, I get to go pay attorney fees. That's just wonderful because you apparently can't do your job. Under Florida statute 286.0114, this ordeal affects public health, welfare, and safety, also under section 2-26 of quote, "rules of the city council," unquote. Also, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Stokel is a doctor. I'll assume as in a physician.
No, no.
Okay, you're educated. Yeah. Well, this is all common sense.
Anyway, we've got that in. All right, well, that's three minutes, so I appreciate it. Thank you very much. We're going to move on. Ray, I agree with you on the flyers. I never really thought about that, but boy, they, they sit out in the street. Go ahead.
Liz Parker, Trevino Circle. I agree on the flyers too. I get two because I have two driveways. It's a bonus.
They just sit up.
That aside, I'm here today on, I guess, a couple of issues. The first and most important to the citizens of Titusville, I would think, is the fact that when we get our water bill seems to shift. For years, I paid my water bill on the 23rd of the month, every year, decades, no problem. Now I get late fees because it seems the dates move. Maybe we're billing every 28 days instead of once a month on a certain day. I'm not certain. However, my issue is I pay on the 23rd, the check is mailed at the latest on the 26th. According to the law, the day the check is mailed is the date it is received. People who are being charged late fees because their check is received 14 days after they mailed it should not be receiving late fees. I refer the council to what I've already referred to the city attorney, Clayhider Truck Lines versus Atherton, which is 400 SO, 2nd District, 1295 Florida District Court of Appeal, 1981. And Special Disabilities Trust Fund versus Robbins, 44 South, 2nd 54th Florida District Court of Appeals, 1986. To quote these cases, we agree with the fund and hold that the date of payment for the purposes of this section is the date the check is mailed to the employer or carrier. And the other case states, we agree, oh, excuse me, I ended up with the same case again, the date of mailing considered in law to be the date of payment. So according to the law, we should not be billing residents for late fees if their check was mailed on time. That's issue one. My other issue has to do with the fact that we seem to be changing our code of ordinances and for the Singleton 405 area, changing what is OR, what is GU, making it into residential, going to high-density residential. We have issues with regard to stormwater that we're being addressed by the conservation areas and the GU areas. By relocating these and taking different areas of property and saying, oh, well, these are going to be the new ones, doesn't necessarily protect the citizens from flooding like Maxine is experiencing. It's the same situation we experience on Royal Oak, and I'm certain it's the same experience that many citizens have across the city where there's green space that's designated OR and GU. We should not be paying fast and loose in order to develop and line the pockets of developers. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin, can you comment on the water bill shift concern? I've not heard that.
Unfortunately, I can't because I'd have to go through customer service.
Say that again.
Unfortunately, I can't because the customer service handles the billing of the city. So we have to get with the customer service staff and the city manager.
All right, then with that.
Can you ask me a little bit on that? The Water Department sent this to the city attorney.
Okay, thank you. All right, then at the very least, I'd like to have staff look into that and give me an idea then, what the water bill shift. I've not heard such a thing. City Attorney, do you have anything on that or you want to get back to us?
The water bill shift as far as the date? I have nothing to do with when the water bills go out.
I think she's saying that some of the dates, like you're being billed for 31 days, sometimes it's 28 days. I think that's what we would like clarification on.
The issue with the date of payment was that. I don't hear why you're billing.
But keep it the same.
See, the payment is the date that it was sent by.
Yeah, that's, that makes sense to me.
I think her question is if she mails it on Monday and the bill is due on Wednesday, she shouldn't be charged.
That was her second thing.
It's not the day that, that they put it in the mailbox.
The date that it's.
Cases that were cited have to do, I believe, with workers' comp and particular laws on payments for disability payments, not a general law about all bills that are paid. So if you mail your power company or you send a bill to somebody else, they don't have to honor it the day you put it in the mail. It's the day they receive it. Those were laws that she associated with or in that context of those types of payments.
We can take it to your California.
I got you. All right, Member Stokel, are you good?
Okay.
All right, next up. All right, city manager.
On to consent, we have items A through O. City Council, do you have any questions of staff for consent agenda items?
Clear your board here, guys, if you haven't. Member Stokel, you have a question?
I don't know if it's a question, but I want to pull 8K.
I do too.
Okay. Member Nelson and Member Stokel want to pull 8, 8K.
Are there any other items that city council would like to pull for further discussion?
I see none.
City clerk, are there any cards for consent agenda items A through O?
We have one card.
And mayor, I'd like to read the titles for the record, and then we will come back and do 9K. Or 8K, sorry.
One second. Okay, go ahead.
Consent agenda item 8A, approve the purchase of two fire engines and associated tools and equipment. Consent agenda item 8B, approve the award of proposal for the historic preservation officer. Consent agenda item 8C, approve the award of a fire headquarters flooring replacement. Consent agenda item 8D, approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Florida State Lodge of Fraternal Order of Police Incorporated, representing police officers, corporals, sergeants, and dispatchers, and the city of Titusville. Consent agenda item 8E, approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Florida State Lodge of Fraternal Order of Police Incorporated, representing the lieutenants and the city of Titusville. Consent agenda item 8F, approve the purchase of vehicles for Public Works. Consent agenda item 8G, approve the use of the Brevard County contract for the Blue Herring Water Reclamation Facility roof coating. Consent agenda item 8H, approve the bid for the purchase of polymer. Consent agenda item 8I, approve the outside employment contract with vendor off-duty management for the police department. Consent agenda item 8J, approve resolution 192024, amending resolution 152024, approving a temporary road closure of state's roads for special events. This is the Astronaut High School Homecoming Parade scheduled now for 30 October 2024. Consent agenda item 8L, approve the use of the Cape Canaveral Service Agreement for the Splash Pad Operations and Maintenance Contract. Consent agenda item 8M, approve the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Application. Consent agenda item 8N, approve the reallocation of the American Rescue Act ARPA funds. And consent agenda item 8O, approve the purchase of Axion body cameras, TASER, Incar video systems, and a new five-year contract. And we are going back to item K, which is consulting services for inclusionary housing and linkage fees. And that will be addressed to Brad.
Member Stokel, you have a question?
Not a question. I'm more of discussion. Just going through this, I think when we had first talked about inclusionary housing or zoning, I should say, we were concerned about affordable housing. The consulting fee is $90,000. And I feel, I have a hard time approving this right now just because of what we've done recently. I think we have a lot of growth and development coming before us, and we just recently voted to not give tax breaks or incentives for affordable housing and specifically live local. And live local is still in effect to help with affordable housing. So for me, I'd rather just not start the process for paying for consulting because then I think, once we pay for that, then we're going to probably, we've already invested that, we'll probably want to continue to invest. And I think that we already have projects coming before us for that. So I would just like to hold on that and not move forward with that for the time being.
Member Nelson.
I agree with it, Member Stokel. We have other things coming up, and I hate to see us spend $90,000 if we're not ready to move forward.
Anybody else in council? That being brought up, I tend to agree, especially noting what we've just done recently and the movement that we're making. That wasn't the movement we were making years ago. So that would have been more apt perhaps in our early years of 16 or 18. But I tend to agree. Any other council member? City manager, what, what's our next step if we?
So you can vote to not approve item 8K. And then you can do your normal vote to approve consent agenda items A through J and L through O.
Okay. With that, let me pull the card or have, call the card, not pull the card.
We have one card on Stan Johnston for item 8F and 8G.
8, F, did you say? F?
F.
As in Frank. Thank you. F and G. Back to back.
Stan Johnston, and I'm approaching you as a, not only as a PE, but I wrote these down in my letter to our governor, is that I'm also 25, I'm a veteran and 25 years as a licensed PE and licensed surveyor as employed by Brevard County and the city of Titusville. And I was formerly known as the head of Civil Engineering Department as employed by Brevard County, Brevard Community College, member of Talbada Pi Engineering Honorary Society, professional engineer for over 46 years, former president ASC Cape Canaveral Branch. And so, so these are some of the things I did. But now, when I come to city council meetings, I'm, I'm very disrespected and it's. But now, when I come to city council meetings, I'm very disrespected and it's a concern to me because it appears to be because of my unpopular revelations of my findings. But let's go back to what this is, is I'm in disagreement with what's going on with this because the way you're spending your money. In other words, you're doing all these little things, but the thing is, for example, when you don't properly test for sewage spills, when you don't, and it goes on for months and months and years and years, and I have to report it to you, I make affidavit about it, and you do nothing, you should educate your professional engineers. It's fundamental.
Purchasing of vehicles, are you concerned about that?
Well, I'm saying about spending of the money.
I get the money, but...
You're skipping some things that have a higher priority.
Well, you asked to talk about F and G.
That's correct, F and G.
You want the, you don't want us to purchase the vehicles?
Well, I want you to, you're not doing the prioritizing. Prioritizing should be, first of all, I mean, health, safety, and welfare of the public. And that's what many of you council members talk about. And right now is you're violating fundamental principles of professional engineering and good engineering. And it's just fundamental. First day, first day, it's either the first or the second day in my sanitary sewer class is that the professor, a doctor, said, hey, you know what the characteristics of sewage is? Odorless. Raw sewage is odorless. Of course, I raised my hand, I said, hey, you know, maybe that person has never been to my grandpa's bathroom. And, you know, I was criticized somewhat. But it was hilarious. But anyhow, but that's the case, and many people have died because sewage is odorless in many cases.
Thanks, Dan.
God bless you.
All right, let's work on, what was it? F? No.
Before we do that, can I say something?
Go ahead.
Please. We were funding an infrastructure list, basically ranking the projects in order of importance, what needed to be done first and what needed to be done second, so on. I'm not sure when we expect that list back, and maybe Kevin knows. I'm hoping he knows.
We have an infrastructure list.
I'm not sure what you're asking, Mayor.
When we expect, we hired somebody to make a list of infrastructure projects.
She's wanting to know when it might be back.
Right. Do we know?
For which fund is that?
I think they're not sure about the list.
You're talking about stormwater plan?
Stormwater, sewer.
Geocent, oh, no.
Yeah. Well, I think it was stormwater.
We have Geocentech finish the master plan for water quality for the city.
Okay.
But for the most part, the plan's not fully funded. We are using it to apply for grants. I believe it's in our sorrel cycle. This time, we used it. We don't have a consultant prioritizing water sewer projects. We have that prioritization built into our budget.
Okay.
And our ongoing five-year and longer plans. So likewise, general fund, we don't have a consultant that does the road reserving plans or general fund plans. We have those built into our budgets.
Okay. I apologize because I screwed that up and mixed up water and sewer.
I did too, after you said it.
That's not good. That's not good.
I did too, though.
But talking about projects, I was going to ask you this at the end, so I'll ask you now. We were working on the sewer lines going along the river to work on sewer spills. And can you tell us where we are on that?
That's essentially three separate projects working in different time frames. So the Indian River Force Main, if you notice, they just finished a drill on Main Street today. They have one additional directional drill to do at KFC with the rig is sitting there for tomorrow, hopefully. And then that line will be substantially completed in the ground. We still have things as built and the connections to make at each end through the plant and the lift station in South Street to be done, and the EP clearance before it can go active, but that should be taken care of by the end of the calendar year. It should be up and active, and the old line will be decommissioned at that time, cleaned and broken in pieces in the ground. So that's the major piece, is South Street to the Osprey Wastewater Treatment Facility. The next segment in there will be the Seminole Lift Station and Bayview Lift Station. That's the elimination of Bayview Lift Station and the rebuilding of Seminole. The Force Main, that area has already been replaced once, but this will eliminate one of our riverfront lift stations will be demolished completely. And the other one will be rebuilt to a new standard and take on the flow from the decommissioned Bayview Lift Station. The third segment in that area will be the Riverside Drive Force Main, where we had the break during the hurricane. That one's in design now. We talked to designers today. We hope by the end of the calendar year, we'll have a bidable project, ready to put that on the street either at mid-year or as the year continues. Again, it'll be a long-term project, likely a full directional drilled project to limit the concrete street impact.
Okay.
Close to a $5 million investment for that section. But these three pieces working together will rehab the oldest Force Main, which is Riverside Drive Force Main, eliminate a lift station, and eliminate the Force Main that's had the most breaks in recent history along Indian River. So while they'll still be in the area, they will be moved off of the riverbank, put into the street, and rehab to a new pipe. These are 1950s air pipes along Riverside.
I wanted to just say thank you and make sure people understood that this is a lot of money, and we are working on it on a continual basis. So I also wanted to say thank you for the hybrid trucks. Because, you know, that always makes me smile. So you want a motion?
No. Vice Mayor.
Yes, to Member Stokel. I don't see, what is it, item K?
8K.
I'm totally in agreeance with saving money. I don't see the connection between live local and, you know, I mean, and affordable housing have a big connection with the study, you know, it's insurance is going to be. But anytime that you recommend saving a dollar, you got my support. I don't see the connection, but the saving of dollars is great.
Okay, we'll take a motion on K.
Mayor Diesel.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mayor Diesel, we got one additional card.
Go ahead.
Vicki Conklin.
Okay.
For item C, F, and G.
C, F, and G.
Good evening, Vicki Conklin, 2920 Royal Oak Drive, here in Titusville. It's just a question, really. I noticed on some of the consent agenda items with the bidding and so forth, lowest and best bid is what I assume is being taken, but has there ever been discussion about varying that to favor a local vendor policy?
Yep.
If that's within a certain percent? Because it seems like we're giving away business to Jacksonville for vehicles. We have a local Ford.
Before you say exactly what it is.
Please.
Exactly what it is is what you said. If it's within a certain percentage, we tend to favor. We certainly want to get apples to apples.
Right.
And certainly staff. We don't sit there and go down there and evaluate things, but it came up, gosh, about four, five years ago, maybe more, and that was a big deal. We were feeling like we're getting too many bids somewhere else. So we totally agree with that, and I thank you for saying that.
Right. Because flooring's going to Cocoa Vehicles to Jacksonville and roofing to Melbourne. So I hate seeing that. I'd like to support our local business.
Right. And we totally agree. I think it's a well, a good point. And truthfully, if it's Melbourne or Atlanta, we'd like to try to stay with Melbourne, but we'd like to stay in Titusville.
Right, right. So maybe we need to look at those percents of variance.
Agree.
Right. To make sure we're trying to do that.
That's the plan. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Vicki, we do have percents.
Yeah.
So if you're within a certain percentage of the lower bid and you're local, then you would get the contract.
It's good to hear putting words again, though. We had that whole big debate, and that's exactly how it went down. Good job. Are we done there? Okay, now, did we do a motion yet?
No.
Okay, Member Nelson.
Move to deny inclusionary housing and linkage fees 2024 consulting services contract for era P-24-P-034TB.
Second.
All right, this is K.
This is K.
Okay, so basically to remove K from the...
Okay, I have a question. You said deny. Did you mean to say defer?
Or remove?
You just want it off the books completely.
Yeah, we'll bring it up.
At this time?
We'll bring it up, yeah, if we need to again.
Wouldn't that be deferring it, rather than denying it?
If denying it tonight, and then what you do with it later will be, not me.
This is a consulting contract?
Okay.
So you're disapproving a contract?
All right, I'm good.
All right. What, her motion, do I have a second?
Yes. It was me, Herman, don't try.
Okay. Second by Member Stokel, motion by Member Nelson, roll call vote.
Member Cole.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Okay, so K is deferred, denied, however you want to put it.
Motion to approve consent agenda items A through J and L through O.
Second.
I have a motion, Member Nelson, second for Member Cole, roll call vote.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Cole.
Yes.
Passed unanimously. City Manager.
Onto 9A, which is Comprehensive Plan Amendment CPA number 1-2024, Future Land Use, Transportation, Housing Elements, and Downtown Gateway Objectives, Policies, Strategies, and New Citywide Element. This contains ordinances number 33, 2024, 34, 2024, 35, 2024, and 36, 2024. At the, hang on just a second, I've got to find it. At the September 18th, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as your local planning agency, they recommended approval 70. City Attorney will read the ordinances for the record, and then I'll continue with the introduction.
Right, I will read all four ordinances. We will deal with these individually, so if anyone has a card on either ordinance 33, 34, 35, or 36, put in the cards, and you will have an opportunity to have three minutes on each of the ordinances. Ordinance number 33, 2024, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60, 1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville. By adopting Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1, 2024, by adding a new citywide element goal, objectives, and policies to address the regional economy, quality of life, place-based design, and employment, providing for severability, repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances, incorporation into the comprehensive plan, and an effective date. Ordinance number 34, 2024, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60, 1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville. By adopting Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1, 2024, by amending the existing future land use element and transportation element, specifically amending objectives 1.1, character land use districts, 1.2 redevelopment and adaptive reuse, 1.10 downtown land use, 1.21 density and intensity land use criteria and associated policies and strategies of the future land use element, amending the policies and strategies of objective 1.1 of the transportation element, and adding objective 1.9 and associated policies and strategies to the transportation element, providing for severability, repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances, incorporation in the comprehensive plan, and an effective date. Ordinance number 35, 2024, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60, 1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville. By adopting Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1, 2024, to add a new gateway corridor objective, policies and strategies to encourage redevelopment on commercial corridors and strengthen policies related to natural resource protection, landscaping, and discourage urban sprawl by amending the existing future land use element objectives 1.5 and 1.7, and associated policies and strategies related to natural resources, greenhouse gases, and urban sprawl, amending the shoreline mixed-use objective 1.12, and associated policies and strategies, and adding a new gateway corridor objective 1.24, and associated policies and strategies, providing for severability, repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances, incorporation in the comprehensive plan, and an effective date. Ordinance number 36, 2024, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60, 1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville. By adopting Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1, 2024, by amending the existing housing elements, specifically amending objective 1.1, 1.2, 1.9, and 1.10, and subsequent policies and strategies related to housing types, affordable housing, and sustainable building practices, providing for severability, repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances, incorporation in comprehensive plan, and an effective date.
On April 27th, 2022, the city council directed staff to propose a strategy whereby certain portions of the draft 2040 Titusville Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan may be incorporated and adopted into the comprehensive plan. The staff recommended adopting four separate amendments, which includes mobility, transportation, housing, historic preservation, land use, and the environment. This amendment includes citywide goals and objectives and policies, amendments to the goals and objectives in the future land use element, transportation element, and housing element of the comprehensive plan. The amendment primarily addresses redevelopment incentives in the downtown and the city's major commercial corridors, gateways. The amendment does not include draft changes to the urban mixed-use objectives and policies in the future land use element. A separate amendment will be scheduled at a later date. Mr. Parrish is here to give you a final update on this, and I applaud staff's two-plus-years work of effort to put this together.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I did since your last time. This was brought before you, there was a first reading, this is the final or second reading and final public hearing. I've added one additional item to your agenda on page 1287 of your packet. It's a matrix. It's something that was requested of us to try and provide to you a tool or a matrix that shows a comparison or an explanation of the current comprehensive plan versus what's being proposed. I'll try and answer any questions you have about it. I believe you are very familiar with this project, so I won't go through in detail or this project again, but I'll just highlight that there are four ordinances dealing with amendments to three of the elements of the comprehensive plan, future land use, transportation, and housing, primarily dealing with the downtown and the gateway corridors along our major commercial corridor areas. So with that, I'll try and answer any questions you have.
Any questions from council? As you said, we've pretty much gone over this just two weeks ago.
A lot of work.
Been a lot of work. A lot, a lot of work. All right, so we will go, item one.
Cards?
Yes. Item one, cards?
I have a card from Stan Johnston that's just for 9A, so I don't know which ordinance you would like to speak on.
I think probably all of them.
I just, I just, three minutes, that's all.
Okay. So would you like him to come up now?
Yeah, three minutes on all of them, absolutely. Three minutes. Thank you, Stan.
And I just received a second card as well.
If you want to give me more time, I can talk longer.
You sure can. My man.
Okay, all right. As you know, I'm a professional engineer, so I'm going to speak to you about something that I have as a law that I have to follow, and the city is violating that law. It's seriously violating it, violating the stormwater management plan and violating here and there and just many places. The law is that water flows downhill. It's in the complaint, I tell you, and it's a true law.
Eight years.
I have to do that.
You're right.
Water flows downhill. And the thing is, is that this is a, this is a map of part of our stormwater management plan.
I haven't seen nothing in a while.
And the thing is, is that the city of Titusville is that water is designed to flow this way and then to the St. John's River. Do you know why it's designed to flow that way? Because water flows downhill. And the thing is, is that, is that, is that when the water gets to somewhere, you know, before or after I-95, is we have these huge box corbs. Listen to the size of these box corbs. Nine foot by three foot. Wow. Seven foot by three foot. Two six-foot box corbs. Those aren't little, those are big. And you know why water doesn't go through those? Those aren't little, those are big. And you know why water doesn't go through those? Because the city of Titusville violates the law and their comprehensive plan, and their stormwater management plan of greater Titusville, that water flows downhill. And I'm here to tell you, as a professional engineer, water flows downhill. And someday, you're going to have a problem with this because your floodplains do not work. Or how can you possi, no one can possibly calculate what you're going to do. The stoppage of, of this, and the thing is, is that the, the government, federal government, F D O T, designed these culverts, millions of dollars, and you know what the city of Titusville is doing? I don't know if anybody's listening. They're ignoring the fact that water flows downhill. That's the city of Titusville. I'm a professional engineer, and, uh, I had to fol, follow these, not just these, these are, these are just engineering laws, and God's laws too. Now, how in the world, the city of Titusville, and there's no professional engineer that'll disagree with me that I know of, not any of them, no one in the city of Titusville? But you continue doing it. The problem is, water flows downhill, and you're so, I don't know, it's bad. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Is this, uh, next card, please?
Elizabeth Parker.
And this is on, uh, item one still.
Uh, nine?
Nine A.
This is ordinance thirty-three twenty-two four, item one.
Yeah, yeah, it's okay. If it's nine A and, well, they got it broken up into four different areas. Item one.
Okay, I'm on item four, should I wait?
Okay, yeah, go ahead and hold up, and we'll get to you on them in just a minute. Any other thing else on item one? All right, member Nelson?
Move to approve ordinance number three-three dash twenty-two four, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number sixteen dash nineteen-eighty-eight.
Second.
He's quick.
I gotta be quick.
I have a motion, member Nelson, and a second for member Cole, roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Item one, passed unanimously, city manager.
You're on to iden, uh, ordinance number thirty-four twenty-two four.
Uh, any comments? Um, Brad, do you want to comment on that?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, anything from council? Call the cards? Member Nelson?
Move to approve ordinance number thirty-two, thirty-four dash twenty-two four, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number sixteen, sixty dash nineteen-eighty-eight.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second for member Nelson, no, member Cole. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes, passed unanimously, city manager.
Onto I, ordinance number thirty-five twenty-two four.
Brad, anything?
No, sir.
City, uh, council? Cards? Member Nelson?
Move to approve ordinance number thirty-five dash twenty-two four, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number sixty dash nineteen-eighty-eight.
Second.
I have a motion, member Nelson, and a second for member Cole, roll call vote.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson? Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes, passed unanimously, city manager.
Ordinance number thirty-six twenty-two four.
Uh, Mr. Parrish?
No, sir.
Council? Cards?
Elizabeth Parker?
I would have remembered. There you go. Now we got it.
Back again. All right, so I just had a question really with regard to the changes to objective one point one. What exactly are the changes to one point one? Because one point one has strategy one point one point one, point one.
Oh, I see, I see, yeah.
And that is coordinating the residential growth with the land use plan and respective zoning, and the goal of this policy is the city shall support a suitable mix of housing by. So what concerns me is, what are we changing? Are we changing the land, future land use? Are we changing the zoning? Are we changing the housing size? Are we changing the density? What are we changing?
Um, I'll redirect that, member, uh, member, you're not member. Uh, Mr. Parrish?
So that objective and policy, uh, is being amended to clarify, uh, a more specific intent of allowing some different types of housing. So that policy one point one point one that's referred to is asking the city to consider, uh, a mix of different types of housing in the downtown. Uh, the ordinance that was just, uh, approved by council previous to this one did include a residential density poll, which was a new, different way of calculating density. So it would allow more units on a parcel in the downtown if it could be developed according to other requirements of the code.
So my concern is that this particular policy is not referring to downtown. So this would be a universal change that would affect all communities across the city of Titusville. How are we designating the difference between the commercial corridor and the residential neighborhoods?
You're correct. It does also say about citywide as well. So it's encouraging a mix of housing options in different parts of the city and different areas, and different types of incomes. And it does state a strategy to coordinate the residential growth, the land use plan, and respective zoning. So basically, we would use our code and other programs that we have to help implement this policy.
So my concern as a homeowner is my property value is driven by who my neighbors are. My land being high and dry is driven by what's built around me. The idea that we're going to change our plan and our future land use map in a way that may very well impact just me, not just me, but all of the citizens of Titusville, I objected this change.
All right, thank you.
And I think as a city, we ought to consider the long-term ramifications of making such a significant plan to our fl, future land use and comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Uh, any other cards?
No, sir.
Um, council, member Nelson?
I don't know if Mr. Parrish wants to address the ladies' concerns or not before I make that motion.
I think he did. We're good.
We're good. Okay. Move to approve ordinance number thirty-six dash twenty-two four, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number sixty dash nineteen-eighty-eight.
Second.
Motion and second, roll call vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Passed unanimously, city manager.
All the way to ordinances. First readings were on ten A, which is ordinance number forty-three twenty-two four, conditional use permit legal ad requirements. The, the city attorney will read this for the record.
Ordinance number forty-three twenty-two four, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances to correct the unintended deletion of the advertisement requirement for conditional use permits by amending section thirty-four seventy-two procedure for obtaining a conditional use permit, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, incorporation into the code, and an effective date.
On October second twenty-two four, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval six zero. This is your first reading. City council will hold the public hearing as, uh, on the twenty-second of October at six-thirty P M.
And remind, minder on these, this is the first reading, there's no motion and no vote, we simply hear them. Um, council, my vice mayor?
No, no, not just about.
Okay, um, any cards on this one? Okay, we have no motion and no, no vote. City manager.
Onto item ten B, which is the rezone number three dash twenty-two four, Titusville Resort and Destination Master Plan Amendment, and the, um, ordinance associated with that is tw, ordinance number forty-four twenty-two four. The city attorney will read that for the record.
Ordinance number forty-four twenty-two four, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number twenty-nine twenty-one, by amending the master plan and conditions associated with the urban village U V zoning district on approximately twenty-two acres of land located at thirty-five fifty South Washington Avenue to include an assisted living facility use, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and an effective date.
On October second twenty-two four, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval six zero. Um, this is your first reading. City council will hold the public hearing on October twenty-second at six-thirty P M.
Again, first reading, no motion, no vote, cards?
Um, applicants here just to answer questions.
Uh, I'm glad to see applicants here. I appreciate you sitting through the rest of this. Um, good to see you again. I haven't seen you back in a while. Uh, but, and again, it's first reading, uh, no motion, no vote, and I appreciate, appreciate you being here. City manager.
Takes us to, uh, mayor and council report, uh, correction, petitions and requests.
Yeah, um, petitions and requests, second time. All right, we were good with that. Now we move to mayor and council reports. We'll start on the other end with, I think we did that last time, but I'm over here. Uh, member Cole?
I'd just like to commend our city manager and our city staff, the way they operated the emergency operating center. I just dropped by because I needed to get out of the house.
If you didn't say that, I was going to tell on you.
And, you know, that was the truth, and hopefully my wife's not looking. But I sat in there and, I mean, it was, I was amazed, especially at the food. The food was very good. But, uh, no, it's a, it's a well-operating system, and, uh, I mean, I went home feeling very full and very comfortable. I appreciate what you guys do though, really, seriously.
Yes, sir, and, uh, we have a great team, and what you didn't see was the preparation prior to what you were witnessing was, it's, we, we prepare for the storm, we execute the storm through the E O C, and now we're doing recovery and post-cleanup, which, um, hopefully will be completed by a week or so.
Yeah, yeah, when. Good, thank you.
Uh, member Nelson?
I would echo what member Cole said. I will be ratting on him though.
Everybody does.
But, uh, yeah, I think we went through relatively unscathed. Uh, when I saw it out in the Gulf and it was category five, scared the bejesus out of me. Uh,
Yeah.
I was like, oh, jeez. But I think we were very fortunate. I think the staff did a great job. And I do have one thing I'd like to have us consider, and it was something, I talked to the city manager about it earlier. Um, remember when Dr. Jacoby was here? And he said that the amount of sewer generated by a septic tank, the septic tanks in two days is equal to a sewer spill.
So if I could, what, what he actually said is, um, we reported seven point two million gallons, but that all did not go in the lagoon. We were able to siphon it out of the ponds and we trucked it away. But he, he said hypothetically, should, i, if, that, he used that number, seven point two million gallons, and he said, if that were in fact into the lagoon, that equals one point nine days of septic tank loading.
Which is somewhat scary. So I'm bringing this up because I'm like, you know, we're working like crazy to fix the infrastructure. Uh, we're pushing to get it done, but with all the septic tanks we have, it's a problem. Uh, I was talking to Sandy earlier, and I guess by twenty-thirty, uh, you have to have an advanced septic tank, or you have to hook to a sewer system. So, Sarah, when you're up there, I would love to see you pushing it because we're working our hardest, but if that's what we're working against, then that's a problem.
So, and I know, I think our legislative priorities, the city manager has listed in here, so maybe we can add that as one of ours.
Yeah.
To pass on to the Space Coast League of Cities, and then I can bring it up at the Florida League of Cities.
And I'm wondering if the other cities realize the impact of the sewer system. And to be honest with you, I was like, wow, you know, um, this is crazy.
So there's legislation that, um, has been, it, it's actually passed, so if sewer is available, um, and you choose not to hook up, um, then we will charge you a fee anyway. That's currently in place.
So maybe the, the option is, if there is sewer system in place, then they have to hook into the sewer system.
Well, the state law says, if you choose not to, we will still charge you the rate.
Right.
So there, there is, there's nothing that says that you have to until, like Sandy spoke to you earlier about, uh, there's a date that you now have to hook up or go to the newer system.
Do we know if we're charging anybody currently?
We are, yes.
We are, okay.
Yeah. But even though.
But I, I see what you're saying. You're like, is that enough?
We're charging them, but.
They're still.
Then it's still going into the river. And Scott, do we know how many septic tanks we have?
I, I, I can't, I don't want to.
Okay.
What, what we did is we did zones. We did, uh, from U S one to the river. Uh, that, those are our priority ones, and the second zone is a certain distance from U S one west, and then the third zone is the rest of the city. So, um, we're focused right now on the first two zones, and there is, um, grants available to allow people to hook up to that. We're in the education phase right now to try to help people to understand what, um, it means to come off sewer system, I mean, come off septic and, um, go into
And how important it is, because to me, it's really.
Maybe we could get some information on where those septics are for us to try to push out education-wise too.
Yeah.
For peop, because I don't know where they are. I know we still have septic, and I know we're trying to get them off specifically the river right now. Um, but if we know that and we can bring awareness, I, I, it's just not talked about. We get, we talk about, you know, the sewage spills that happen, but that's, even this one we just had with the hurricane, so minimal compared to what's happening with the septic right now, and it's just not talked about.
I will tell you, north of us and south of us, there's a lot more.
Yeah, I will say that as well, yes. It, it could have been a lot worse.
Yeah.
So.
I've always, uh, used, and, and city manager knows this, when I even ran in sixteen, and the, uh, half-cent sales tax for the lagoon was coming up, I remember sitting in this room and talking to somebody, one of the presenters. I said, you know, the problem with that is, if we do a great job, i, i, the lagoon is like a fish tank, and it's, it's like a pool, a fish tank, whatever you're going to do. And we've cleaned our part of the fish tank, but if to the south, they've got septic tanks on the river and they're not doing their part, and to the north, they're not doing their part, we can keep cleaning our septic tank, or, 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 excuse me, our fishbowl, and, and certainly, we, we have worked on, and we are working on getting the septic tanks especially off the river. So we're doing our part, but I don't know, and I'm not saying they're not, because I don't know, uh, but does not seem as though the north and the south is, um, there's a lot of septic tanks, uh, up north and south, and I'm not faulting anybody. I lived in Port St. John for a while, and we had a septic tank.
Yeah.
And I believe, most of all, Port St. John is septic tank, so we'll leave that at that. There's a lot of it.
Yeah.
Vice mayor?
Yes, Scott, in, in this conversation about septic tanks, uh, you and I had a conversation a couple of weeks ago about the cost, especially of, of, of joining the river. Have it, um, have it ever been publicized what costs, or send a notice out to, uh, in, uh, residents that still have septic tanks? I know that there are some north of, uh, Bonner, uh, that, I mean, west of Bonner, that still have septic tanks, and so what that connection cost would, uh, relative?
So they do vary? So I'll, I'll use the example that we talked about two weeks ago for that particular citizen who's actually in the county.
Right, right.
She has to do a lift station to get it to the main, and for, in, in her case, it was cost prohibitive because she, she wanted to hook up, but by the time you do a private lift station and run the pipes and everything, um, it was very expensive for her to do, so she chose just to upgrade her septic tank to the new, modern one.
Right.
That way, but, yeah, each, each hookup's different depending on where you're at and where the connection is, and if there's anything that needs to be done to, in fact, push it to, to the pipe.
Yes, see, that kind of education is so, is very valuable, uh, to our citizens of the city. All right, thank you.
I'll pass it to you for anything you need to say. I'm going to go ahead and end for your report. Anything you would add?
Uh, well, I've done a lot of things, uh, but, uh, the most important one is, uh, I, I bravo zulu to, uh, Scott and the staff. I, I love sitting there, uh, getting the reports and the updates on the, on the, uh, pending storm. I didn't care a whole lot about Herman's and Jolene's, uh, uh, conversation, that, that dialogue that they're, that they were having, having fun, keeping. I didn't care a whole lot about Herman's and Jolene's conversation, that dialogue, that they were, that they were having, having fun, keeping one another. But, it was fun, I apologize, I didn't, I didn't care very much. Because I enjoyed reading about Herman, he gets excited like a little kid. But, you know, the Bible tells us we were twice a child and once an adult, he's in that child age again, so, because he's got.
Yes, yes, sir, yes.
Joe, we know, we know you love us.
But it was good, thank you, thank you so much.
So one other comment, Brevard County, who is the EOC as well, they, this was their first storm in their new facility, and they really worked hard to work out the bugs prior to, we had several drills with them, and I think that that, working through things when the actual event occurred, was a lot better. Now, you know, being a pilot, I will tell you, nobody likes to fly a new airplane. We like to fly ones that have been tested and, and, and used quite a bit, so their, their transition to the new EOC was seamless, and I do applaud them as well.
Member Stokel?
On the hurricane comments, just going back to that sewer spill, in my briefing with city manager, we did talk about the sewer spill we'd had, and that sewer line is actually on our list, as Member Nelson was bringing up priorities, it's in the, the design phase, but I think it's important to note, I think sometimes we have these projects and we're funding them, but I think the design phase takes well over a year, and then.
The, the phase that Kevin talked about that's just about done, the South Street Lift Station, the Buffalo Road, that was 18 months in design and permitting. Now, this one took a lot longer to permit, because we had to go under several state roads, we had to go under Garden Street, we had to go under US one, back under US one, and then on down. So, it did take us a long time to get the permitting done with the state. So, I believe that the next subsequent phases will be just trying to figure out, you know, going down the road, which will take less time to permit, but it did take a, quite, quite a time to get it.
Yeah, and I just bring that up, because I feel like it would be nice if we could fix it overnight, but these things do take time, and we've been on council for several years, and just thinking about how much we've already invested in infrastructure and the projects we've done, I feel like this hurricane could have been much worse, had we not already started the process several years ago, and, yeah, I'm just very, very happy with that. The other thing I wanted to mention was, I definitely appreciated the updates, the consistent updates that we were getting from staff, and then anytime I had a question, it was a quick response. I think it helped our citizens feel a lot better, I think they appreciated the updates we were pushing out as a city. If you didn't see, I noticed, one of the things moving forward, it's not, wasn't our decision, but having a shelter in North Brevard, I know that got brought up, and I mentioned it at the county level as well, and even before, I think there was supposed to be one, and then it, it just didn't happen, and then they did end up adding one in Port St. John. But just take note of that, I, that for me personally, moving forward, I, I think I might try to make sure and ensure that that does happen. And then also, yeah, after the cleanup, there were several trees in the roads, and I went driving around, and it was just great to see public works out there, getting trees out of the roadway for safety, they worked so hard. Yeah, it, it just made me really proud to see our efforts for that. And then lastly, yesterday was our Space Coast League of Cities meeting, our guest speaker this time, we had another little panel, and it was on the opioid crisis, and it was interesting to see, they had brought up back in 2019, where Brevard was like the number one in the state, and then how we had gone down from that, and then now the numbers are back up a little bit. And so they're working on a marketing campaign to just try to bring awareness to it, and so they will be sending out a survey for us to fill out as community leaders, to see what are, what are our suggestions that we have to help them try to get our numbers low again on that. So just keep that in mind, as you're talking to citizens, I'm hoping that we can give them some good feedback. I was happy that they were able to speak to all of Brevard County elected officials, local elected officials last night. Just, that's something that I feel like I'd like to see our numbers get lower if possible, and that's all I have.
Alright, thank you, real quick, as the mayor, I have had the honor of being in the EOC with city manager, and I can tell you, it's, and I told him when it was over, that's one thing, I, I don't want to have hurricanes, but I enjoy being part of that team, and when you're in the EOC, you've got the, the police and Amy and those folks. At one point, when it came back up, I guess we got 43 calls within an hour. You know, some, some were very, very important, some were, well, you know, flush the toilet. But anyway, but in the end, that's what they deal with, they do them all, and, and we had the right people doing the right things, the fire department, the fire chief was there, the police chief was there, I was honored to be there, Herman got kicked out of his house for a while. It was just, the teamwork is, is something I'll miss, I might even try to connive my way in sometime when it's all over. So that was awesome, I'm gonna comment on, the, the evacuation shelters has bothered me for the last several hurricanes, and maybe because I was part of the evacuation shelters as an administrator at Titus High School, administrators in the, in the high schools specifically, and elementary schools that hosted them, we, we ran them. I don't know what happened, but they had a great plan there for a while. I was at Imperial Estates three different times, they had, Apollo was open, Memm's Elementary was open, it seems like South Lake was open, there was four or five different evacuation shelters in our city. And then when you had, if you had a handicap situation, I do believe you had to go down perhaps a Challenger, it was a little further away, but we had a handicap accessible, and there was an animal accessible. I don't know who ran that, I, I know that when I was part of it, for us, our leader was Mark Mullins, the school board superintendent. I don't know much more about who all collaborated, I don't know if it was a county commission thing with the school board, but we, as administrators, ran them, and we really were required to be there, and we didn't have, at one time, they weren't doing it very good, because I had a whole hour to prepare everything before I got there, one moved in quick, and we opened Imperial Estate Shelter, and we had people in line. So I don't know, but I do think there was a really, really good system we had for a while, where we had at least five or six in our own city. And in this case, we might be okay that it was coming from the west, but God forbid, and I'm not saying anything at all, because I just know there is something out there right now that's moving this way, they're not expecting anything, but I'm just thinking, what if we had one from the, the east coming west with 145 mile an hour winds, and we don't have shelters? I, I just think that somebody needs to work on that, and I would say probably go back to the old model and say, what happened to it? Because the old model was great, you had staff, the staff was the administrators at the local schools, there was, and it was, it was well done. Member Nelson?
Well, think of the hurricane that came across the street, across the straight state really quickly.
Oh, entirely?
Yeah, it wasn't supposed to hit us.
Nope. Nobody was ready, I wasn't ready. I don't think there was time to shelter for that one, I really don't, I mean, but anyway, I would like to see that come back.
We, we have, just, that's right, we have a little, talking about the water, we have a little bit different situation than the Gulf. The Gulf is very shallow, shallow, and we have, it'll all drop real quick, so it would come in a lot, a lot different, but not.
I just, what I'm saying was, in this case, we all, I know that it certainly, we know is a big deal, but it wasn't the same as if you're sitting in Tampa. Now, if that flips sides and is coming in Cocoa Beach at 140 mile an hour, we gotta have somewhere to go. And especially all those people on the Bay Area Islands gotta have somewhere to go.
That's correct.
And I don't know that, I saw that plan set up the way it used to be.
Same way, Mr. Mayor, with, with the homeless situation.
Absolutely, where we're, and I can tell you, when I worked those shelters for three different hurricanes, we had a lot of homeless, and they, they were probably doing better with us than they were anywhere else. So that was, that was an honor.
I concur.
Another thing on the hurricane, I was, I got a Titusville vehicle and went out before the storm and just kind of evaluated things. Mostly wanted people to be able to see we were out, and that the mayor was out, and as soon as it was over, grabbed the vehicle and went back out, and obviously, things were different, but it was important to be there, and it was my honor to be there. I had a real angst, still have an angst, and I think most of you, if you're paying attention to the weather like I do, I'm kind of a geek that way. I sure get tired of the newscasters not being able to say the word Titusville. It just drives me freaking nuts. Well, not only, it's not only, hey, look at us, it's, for so long, and ultimately, the eye was coming over Titusville. Even though the eye was coming over Titusville, they projected it over Titusville, they'd say, and just south of Daytona, or just north of Palm Bay, part of the problem with that, and I got a chance to talk to Florida today and make that clear, our folks aren't hearing their names, so they're not necessarily feeling like we are in the path or we have an issue. I know they did, they're smarter than that, but at least call out, this is where it's going, guys, you're part of this. So for whatever reason, I'm gonna talk to my boy Eric Burris and say, get your act together. So, maybe they'll, they'll run this down channel two and say, oh, sorry about that, maybe not. Last for my part, but not least, I was blessed and honored to have Willie Taylor as a student of mine, starting about ninth grade. Met him when he was in eighth grade, went over to Jackson to talk to people who wanted to play football, was a big honor. Turned out to be one of the most impactful folks I got to coach. And I was blessed to present him at his fighting edge with, woo, this is hard, mayor's proclamation. And it was truly my honor, I know Willie as well as probably anybody, good, bad, and ugly. And I can tell you that the difference he makes in our city, the difference he makes in homeless, the difference he makes in kids' lives that don't have a home to go to, I can't say enough. So maybe the biggest honor I got to do as the mayor here in the, the last run, was make sure I got Willie recognized, and I got to put my signature on his proclamation, and I appreciate you, brother. Love you. Well, go ahead up there, you got a microphone, this because I called your name, doesn't mean you got to talk.
No, it was regarding the storm and some of the things that was taking place while we're out on patrol, we had, we went to Alpha Bravo Squad. So, we got word, well, I got some word from Miss Liberty, my wife, that a couple of churches got together, and we got word out to the homeless through the department, we got word out to the homeless to meet off of Tropic Street, and they were busing the homeless to shelters, which was a big help, you know, and so a lot of the homeless population got to be sheltered during the storm and bunkered down, you know, and they received the help that they needed.
That's, that's who our people in our city are, that's who you are, and I have no doubt, I can probably say this, that's who the Russells are.
Yes.
The Grove, and more and more, Pastor Wright, I can go on and name many, but I'm just, I'm honored and proud to, you know, be a part of anything you're a part of, and, and the people in the city to come together like that, I'm just not shocked.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And that's mine, city manager.
Onto my report, I've got a couple items, the legislative priorities are due to the League of Cities. The staff has reviewed and made some adjustments to your prior year one, so if there's any changes that you would like to make, I would appreciate your input, and we'll, we'll get it off to the League of Cities.
You good?
Nope, got some more, but.
Okay, anybody, well, anybody want to say anything right now then?
Second is, the board and commission's recognition ceremony is this Thursday night, and it's in Indian River Preserves. And the last is, as with previous hurricanes that came through, we are waiving the fees for repairs of hurricane-damaged properties. Our building official goes out after the storm and makes a survey and documents properties that were damaged by, by the hurricane, both commercial, residential, and city facilities. And, and so if, if we didn't catch your fence down or something, and you need a permit or, or roof or something, then they will go back out to your residence and verify that it is hurricane damage, and then waive the permitting fees. And, subject to your questions, and I do appreciate the act of council during the storm, it's, you know, we, we just lose sleep for three days, and your input though was very useful, and I do appreciate all the kind words, and I'll make sure I pass them on.
Thank you, great team, great team, city, wait, city attorney? Member Nelson?
So the only thing I would add, is that we look at the legislative priorities and consider putting something in there about septic tanks and the need to encourage people to go from septic to sewer.
Can we add that under the restoration of the Indian River Lagoon, maybe?
I was wondering that.
Could that, that way we don't have a separate one? Okay.
Absolutely. While, since we just talked about it, and I gave what it used to be, I don't know who to talk to, but would the state have anything to do with assisting with shelters that we didn't have this time that we used to have?
No, my understanding, it, of course, the shelters are a county-run organization. The reason we, they only opened four, eventually four, is there was no evacuation ordered, and had an evacuation been ordered, those numbers were, would have been back to the numbers that you served in.
Do they have a plan that, because I don't know if any administrator, my son is a principal, doesn't know anything about that. I don't think anybody in the school board has anything to do with it anymore.
I, I can't answer that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if we're gonna have a plan, we probably ought to know what it is. And I'm not pointing at you when I say that, but I am saying there was a lot of, because I, again, having been there and done that three or four different times, and you recall when I did, I'd call you from there, actually, we communicated quite well, it was nice to have you there. Think I would just become a council member, actually, the first one, and it's just, as we keep talking about, man, remember when we had this? And you had the Imperial Estate Principal, the Oak Park Principal, we had like five different principals and assistant principals running a shelter, the cafeteria is open, so three times a day, they come in and they eat.
And I think we came out and pumped out your school.
You came out and pumped out the school, yes you did, and we lost our generator, and we had all kinds of problems, but I'll tell you the last story. Whenever those tornadoes pop up, and it starts going wah, 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 well, we had the elderly corner, and the elderly corner is probably about 30 people, I guess I'm elderly now, but they're older than me. And every time that thing went off, you got 12 radios in there going wah, 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 and they're yelling, they called me, coach, coach, coach. I'm like, I'm just staying here, everything's fine, everything's fine, but those things are scary. I mean, if you think about it, get 12 or 14 of them going off in the same room. So, because they had a lot of little, like we did this last time, not quite as many, but we had all these little tornadoes popping up, and every time, they go wah, 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 and these 75, 80-year-old people, wah, wah, just, it's fine, that's why you're here. But that was, I thought it was cute, and we were all safe, so, anyway.
75, 80-year-old people, I don't know why you want to talk about old people.
I, I really hate to say it, but you were classified as elderly.
I know, my question on the, going back to the septic tanks, are there any kind of grants that a citizen can get to assist them to get off a septic and get on to?
Yeah, there, there is funds through the Save the Indian River Lagoon funds.
Okay, do, we, are we publishing that? Okay.
It might be interesting to have an article and talking points, talking about the damage that septic tanks are doing to the river.
Yeah.
And at least educating people and letting them know that the grants are available, so it just might be a way to get it out.
Just, I'm getting ready to say, well, everybody knows that, I can tell you, I had no idea until I got on council and started learning more. I didn't know septic tanks were an issue, I didn't, so I think a lot of people may not.
Yeah.
We good? Thank you, it was a fine meeting, and we'll do this again next week. See you Thursday, per usual, going where we're going, from where I'm coming, I will probably be about 15 minutes late, but tell them I'm on my way, no parade this time. Meeting adjourned.